We will bring your eyes please for the pledge. After trustee Hobbs leads us in the pledge, would you kindly remain standing for a moment of silence for all those that are suffering through the pandemic? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you.
The board is open. Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Hobbs.
Here.
Trustee Daniels.
Here.
Trustee Renfro.
Here.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Confirmation, Hygiene Safety Awareness Month. Whereas Hygiene Safety Awareness Month raises awareness about the importance of hygiene safety. Whereas Hygiene Safety Awareness Month helps people understand the effect of germs, deadly diseases and viruses, COVID-19, Corona, et cetera. Whereas Hygiene Safety Awareness Month educates men, women, and children of all ages in hygiene safety and a healthy lifestyle helps lead to a productive, happier, healthier lives. Whereas Hygiene Safety Awareness Month raises awareness, visibility, and support for practicing hygiene safety. Now therefore, Mayor Don Ryan of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead do proclaim the month of June 2020, Hygiene Safety Awareness Month, to help remind everyone the importance of good hygiene and to motivate men, women, and children to pay more attention to hygiene safety during this month and all year around. Resolve that upon the recommendation of Samantha Fountain, Deputy Village Clerk. The Board of Trustees hereby raise the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting May 19, 2020 and accept them as revealed. Move by trustee Daniels, second. By trustee Adam Johnson.
Deputy Mayor.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Pledge is to report that Mayor Ryan and Deputy Mayor Renfro have approved the miscellaneous business licenses as revealed. Resolve that upon the recommendation of Lottie Lutz, purchasing agent, and Bijan Farahani, Engineering Department, that bid number one furnished and delivered 10,000 pounds of granular 50-pound vats of sodium, Texas matter, phosphate, and Incorporated Village of Hempstead be granted an additional one-year extension under the same terms and conditions as new bid number H1, HE&amp;V 2020, 2021, and the fiscal dividend awarded to the lowest bidder of coin, chemical 3015, state of Pro Norm, Pennsylvania, 19021, in the amount of $9,959.
Move. Second. I have another question, but may, uh, I believe Mike Taylor's name in four, five, and six should replace Bijan's name. I was so instructed by Patricia Perez, but I replayed.
Did you say Mike Taylor?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so, after we move from Bijan to Mike Taylor?
And that applies to the next two resolutions as well.
Okay, so I'll move Bijan's name to Mike Taylor on item number five and item number six as well.
Four, five, and six.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
No. Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Lottie Lutz, purchasing agent, and Mike Taylor of the Wood Plant, that bid number two HE&amp;V 2019, 2020, furnished and delivered 40,000 gallons of sodium high oxide liquid cost soda 50% membrane grade, and Incorporated Village of Hempstead be granted an additional one-year extension under the same terms and conditions as bid number two HE&amp;V 2020, 2021, and the fiscal dividend awarded to the lowest bidder, Univar USA 30 certified Highland Parkway Suite 200, Dallas Road, Illinois, in 60515 in the amount of $90,000 in void dollars.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Lottie Lutz, purchasing agent, and Mike Taylor, Wood Plant, that bid number three HE&amp;V 2019, 2020, furnished and delivered 40,000 gallons of sodium hypoglycide, polarite, 50% bleach, and Incorporated Village of Hempstead be granted an additional one-year extension under the same terms and conditions as new bid number three HE&amp;V 2020, 2021, and the fiscal dividend awarded to the lowest bidder, Twin County Swimming School, 797 Coffin Chute Farm in New York, 11735, in the amount of $50,000.
Second.
Move by who, I'm sorry? Trustee Daniels, second by trustee Hobbs. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Item number seven, resolve that upon the recommendation of Frankie Germanero, the Director of Public Works, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves for the sale of 25 obsolete scrap vehicles and equipment that are not worth repair to be sold to Virgil Recycling Corporation, 71 Plank Avenue, Metro View, 11735, in the amount of $14,055.
So move.
Move by trustee Renfro.
Second.
Second by trustee Hobbs.
Question.
Is that all we can get? Is that all we can do? Please, uh, 25 obsolete scrap vehicles, $14,000?
All right, they're pushing down. We asked Frankie obvious, but this was the, uh, best he could do. I don't know what it looks like, what it looks like.
Exactly, Mayor, Mayor. Can you make sure you're speaking into the mic because we have to have the meeting transcribed after, um, it ends.
If you can say it in the microphone, can you hear me?
The question was asked.
My question was, $14,000 for 25 vehicles, is that the best we can do?
Frank indicated that would be the case. I have not looked at these vehicles, but apparently they must be pretty bad prepared at that lower figure, but that's the figure that we came up with.
All right, has, uh, Gil review this list? Joe Gil? Does anybody know if Joe Gil will review the list?
I don't.
I can't trust that, I just spoke to Frankie.
I just know for the last year and a half, you've been asking for a list of village vehicles. We still really don't have a list of village vehicles, and we're destroying village vehicles, but we don't know what we have, so it just seems.
Might I make a suggestion, Mr. Mayor?
Can you, you have to speak up because we have to transcribe, so just make sure that the camera.
Might I make a suggestion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If we could pull this, uh, number seven until our next meeting, so we'd be able to have someone inspect and, uh, get some answers from Frankie, if, uh, trustees agree.
Okay.
Yeah, that's one. You know, and also can we, um, when we're asking, uh, do they try to like, uh, sell some of these vehicles by auction? I'm sure you could get more individuals, you know, if that's an option, we could also.
We'll get Frankie to respond to those requests. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, you see what choice motion?
Yes. Right, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, I would draw my motion.
Okay. Moving on to item A, please.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Berlaine Holder, Superintendent of the Tax and Water Department, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the Village of Hempstead to enter into an agreement with Value Payment Services LLC, VPS 2207, Cressmore Road, Suite 200, Nashville, Tennessee, to assist processing electronic payments for taxpayers commencing 2020 and 2021 tax year levy.
That would move you.
So move.
Trustee Hobbs, move.
Second.
Second by trustee Renfro. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Item nine, resolve that upon the recommendation of Mayor Don Ryan, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the stipulation of agreements between the Village of Hempstead and the CSDA regarding a tentative agreement covering the period commencing June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021.
So move. There should be 20 more, Frankie.
Yes. Move by trustee Hobbs.
Second.
Second by trustee Daniels. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Kyle Bowles, Fire Chief, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the Village of Hempstead to schedule a public hearing on Tuesday, June 28th at 6:15 PM to consider entering to an agreement with the Village of Hempstead Fire Department to provide fire protection and emergency services for the Incorporated Village of Hempstead.
Um, Deputy clerk, it's June 16th.
June 16th.
June 16th?
Yes.
Yes, but, but let me just ask, um, the board, in the event that, um, actually, no, so it's a public hearing, so the public will have to be able to attend that unless you want to approve the resolution for June 16th or the first meeting in July.
They will be able to attend?
They have to be able to attend.
For a public hearing, yeah. No matter what the population is?
Right, but, but it is okay because it's an essential matter, so it can happen. I'm just giving you that option in case you wanted to move it to July.
Well, you know, we would definitely have to, of course, use universal precaution. Uh, no one should be able to interend without masks, and, uh, we just make sure we do distancing in our seats, but because it is, um, a public hearing, the public has to have the liberty to.
So leave it for June 16th?
So, I mean, I said to the board, maybe you want to vote on June 16th?
June 16th would be fine, unless somebody has a suggestion otherwise. But let me ask you, once the public portion of that hearing closes, of this special hearing, do the people then exit? Can we conduct business as usual?
I would think so.
You can have them exit.
Okay, thank you.
But.
They're gonna be thrilled about that.
Definitely not.
Why don't we discuss it now so we, the other option obviously is that they remain in the room if they so.
So, so the other option that I was giving the board was, would you feel comfortable voting on June 16th or the first meeting in July, which I don't think that's the case?
As long as, if we do it in the first meeting of July, as long as their fire department will have access to using the money effective June 1st when it commences, you know, the $196,000.
Oh, but that's the only issue.
I'm sure, I spoke to Joe Gil.
No, I get it, but have they approved? Even if the hearing is on June 16th, they're still going to be retroactive.
Okay, so it can be retroactive, but they still can use the money?
Right, so I was, I would suggest that this board vote on holding it on the 16th or July if you didn't sign later on, because you voted to approve both dates.
Your suggestion is, is the hope that on the July date, things may have improved from a health, public health point of view?
Or the public may be more confident in having an in-person meeting, since after the close of the public hearing, people may want to stay for a board meeting at that point, in July, or whenever we have it. I think it's going to be pretty difficult to tell people that you have to leave after the public hearing closes.
Well, we don't have to tell them that. This is something the trustees could track them to right now. We can make the determination. So our choice is of June 16th, they leave after the public hearing, or they stay, or we move to the July date. Anybody wish to comment?
Just to let you know, July, they, they only be in the month of July and the month of August one time, just to let you know that.
Cause it ends.
Why don't we, why don't we set the hearing for June 23rd, have them come in here, have a public hearing, and then we all?
On another day?
On another day, why we gotta make it the same day as the meeting? If you have it, that way it's restricted to the public hearing, then we leave.
Should have to worry about putting them out?
We don't have to worry about flipping anybody out.
And we don't have to put them out anyway, if we attach the desire to.
But I would prefer not to have a room full of people, so we can't track.
Okay, well, that's a good suggestion.
And then it's going to be zoomed in?
No, public hearing will be in-person on June 23rd.
Will all the trustees?
Yeah.
All the trustees present, residents present, but just one item.
What time we got to do it?
6:15.
So you want to change it to Tuesday, the 23rd? That would be the next day, only because I would have to put it in the U.K., I mean, the Long Island Herald.
Yes.
Okay, 23rd. Is all trustees filing Tuesday, June 23rd for the public hearing only?
Well, let's go on.
Okay, so I'm going to read it over, she reads?
Yes, please. Resolve that, item number 10, resolve that upon the recommendation of Kyle Bowles, Fire Chief, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the Village of Hempstead to schedule a public hearing on Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020, at 6:15 PM to consider entering to an agreement with the Village of Hempstead Fire Department to provide fire protection and emergency services for the Incorporated Village of Hempstead.
So move.
Move by trustee Hobbs.
Second, but I have a question. So if you're proud of contract with them now, what does that mean? Are they not getting coverage from us, or do you?
Yes. With the fire department, um, the new fire chief who just sworn in by the mayor, um, which we should see that attaching there, Kyle Bowles is the chief for the fire department, Chad Mott is the first assistant, Fred Sanders is the second assistant chief, and James Joyce is the third. They all got sworn in, and we normally would do it the second Tuesday of April. June 1st is their commencement of their fire department agreement for emergency services for the fire department for protection, so they can use the money because it was already allotted.
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about. No, listen, I can promise you that, uh, protection and services are still.
Yes, that's a start.
No, I'm actually, no, I, I press that part, I'm saying, from the coverage of the actual members of the fire department.
Yes.
Is, is there, is there something, like, I don't know if the village, do we, on liability standpoint, stuff like that?
Yes.
Indemnify them, so if we're not in contract with them?
We are. We did, we just did the LoSAP agreement in the month of May.
The LoSAP is, the LoSAP is the term. We indemnify the police department, right? We don't have a contract with the police department, that's, we do have a contract with the police department.
No, their employees.
Their employees. We have a contract with the fire department because they're volunteers.
Yes.
Does that contract say that we indemnify them, and if they're, you know, if we are out of contract, are we leaving them open to liabilities where we would want to cover?
The code actually says.
So it's in the code, so they're, like, that's the question. It was for their protection, not for.
Exactly. Did you get an answer to trustee Daniels' question?
We did.
Um, for number, did you, you have to vote here, right?
No.
You want to hold on to it? No, no, go ahead.
Trustee Johnson. Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels. Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Um, but, but Deputy clerk, I'd like to keep being the same thing with the public hearing that we just held in number 10. I'd like to have the date for this move to July 14th, which is the Tuesday after the board meeting.
July 14th?
If that's okay for the board.
But, well, I talked with, the, I'm still, with.
Number 11 is also a.
Oh, 11.
Public hearing.
Well, look at, July 14th?
That would be the Tuesday after the board.
That went into the original, seven.
Oh, seven. This is originally.
So why would we even vote against each other? Is there a reason? It hasn't been?
They could be the same time, it would just be in the long run.
Maybe, nobody has to.
So you want to do it to June 23rd?
Then coming out, I was questioning everybody, you want. If you're up to here, we can do what you guys want.
June 23rd, 23rd, okay, fine.
That people don't have to say that.
Did you put it in the paper, or you want me to put it along on?
No, you won't, you won't figure it out.
So what time you want to move yours to, this is a little bit longer than the other one that's 15, 5.
So this time is 6:30.
6:30?
But the other one should be quick, right?
Yes.
Like 5:00.
All right, so we're talking the 23rd day, uh, July 6th.
Yes.
No.
I thought it was June, I apologize, June.
Okay. So will you want me to bring up what sort she reads, except the zoning, or read the whole thing?
You're supposed to read the whole thing.
Yeah. Okay. Item number 11, resolve that upon the recommendation of Trudy Sander Hall, Village of Hempstead to hold a public hearing to consider amendment, chapter 1-11, chapter 1-16, chapter 11-5, chapter 52-4, chapter 57-19, chapter 95-21, 95-25, 103-9, 106-15, 119-16, 123-7, 131-14, 131-36, 135-18, 139-160, 139-218 of the Code of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead. Chapter 1 entitled general provisions, chapter 11 entitled living wage, chapter 52 entitled building occupancy, chapter 57 entitled dogs and other animals, chapter 95 entitled peace and good order, chapter 103 entitled public assemblies, cabarets, chapter 106 entitled rental registration, chapter 119 entitled taxation, chapter 123 entitled telephones, public pay, chapter 131 entitled vehicles and traffic, chapter 135 entitled water, and chapter 139 entitled zoning. Whereas, chapter 1-11, 1-16, 11-5, 52-4, 57-19, 95-21, 95-25, 103-9, 106-15, 119-16, 123-7, 131-14, 131-36, 135-18, 139-160, and 139-218 of the Code of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead. Chapter 1 entitled general provisions, chapter 11 entitled living wage, chapter 52 entitled building occupancy, chapter 57 entitled dogs and other animals, chapter 95 entitled peace and good order, chapter 103 entitled public assemblies, cabarets, chapter 106 entitled rental registration, chapter 119 entitled taxation, chapter 123 entitled telephones, public pay, taxation, chapter 123 entitled telephones, public pay, chapter 131 entitled vehicles and traffic, chapter 100, 100 chap, public pay, I'm sorry, chapter 131 entitled vehicles and traffic, chapter 135 entitled water, and chapter 139 entitled zoning.
There was a mistake, I'm going to take out line, can you re-read it?
Which line?
Oh, that's a change.
I need a motion.
So move.
Move by trustee Hobbs.
Second.
Second by trustee Daniels. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Frankie Germanero, Director of Public Works, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves and approves for Richard Bradley to carry over 12 vacation days past his anniversary date of May 22nd, 2020.
So move.
Move by trustee Hobbs.
Second.
Second by trustee Johnson.
All right, question.
You first. Is, is this getting to be, is this a regular thing now, that everybody's carrying over their vacation and sick days?
Well, in all likelihood, all employees should carry over, um, their, um, vacation days, and she reads, you want to explain why?
And is there a limit?
Why they should carry it over? They, so they all, they all have the. They all can ask for their vacation days to be carried over before their anniversary date. Um, in this case, Frankie did attach a memo that these employees weren't able to use all of their sick time because of the pandemic, and that's why he's asking that they be carried over. But the contract does act, does allow them to carry it over as long as they seek approval from the trustees before their anniversary date. And people want to carry it over because they don't want to lose the days.
What number is that?
Number 12.
12.
Yeah, can we, can we move to executive session to discuss this?
For personnel matters?
Personnel matters.
You want to hold 12, 13, and 14, and 15?
Is that just for 12, or are you looking ahead too?
Mine's a look ahead, it's pretty repetitive.
It's through 16, 12 through 16.
12 through 16. Do we have a, uh, reform of motion, trustee?
So, no, I think that so trustee Hobbs should withdraw his motion? And said you should move to go into executive session, but you're going to do it now or later? You could, you move to go in after?
Whatever, whatever they think. I don't think that's going to.
I think we should do it now.
Yeah, I, so I would, I would draw my motion.
Okay.
All right.
And now.
And I make a motion that we're going to take this session.
So I will draw my motion to make. We have a second?
I have Frankie Germanero on line.
That's.
We have a motion.
He can join any executive session.
They would like you to be able to join until executive session, Frankie, so.
We have second.
Should we have a second on the motion?
Second? Second, I'll second.
If you can vote on.
They just moved.
We got to change it to second, I know.
Just moved to go into executive session.
What, how do you say that?
But 12 through 16.
12 through 16.
12 through 16.
Deputy Board of Trustees, we can hold the board.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Frankie Germanero, Director of Public Works, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves and or approves for Richard Bradley to carry over 12 vacation days past his anniversary date of May 22nd, 2020.
So move.
Move by trustee Hobbs.
Second.
Second by trustee Johnson. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Frankie Germanero, Director of Public Works, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves and or approves for Felipe Tensura to carry over three vacation days past his anniversary date of June 13, 2020.
So move.
Move by trustee Hobbs.
Second.
Second by trustee Daniels. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Frankie Germanero, Director of Public Works, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves for James Merchant to carry over 12 vacation days past his anniversary date of May 13, 2020.
So move.
Move by trustee Hobbs.
Second.
Second by trustee Daniels. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
And if we could ask then, if just the board stays, we can draw off the.
Mike, and will we go?
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Item number 12, she reads?
Yes.
Yeah.
Resolve that upon, oh, we can get a bit of motion, trustee Hobbs and Johnson.
We have to read, go to the floor and say.
Go to the floor?
Yeah. So just read it, get it, we're making.
Okay. Resolve that upon the recommendation of Frankie Germanero, Director of Public Works, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves and or approves for Richard Bradley to carry over 12 vacation days past his anniversary date of May 22nd, 2020.
So move.
Move by trustee Hobbs.
Second.
Second by trustee Johnson. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Frankie Germanero, Director of Public Works, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves and or approves for Felipe Tensura to carry over three vacation days past his anniversary date of June 13, 2020.
So move.
Move by trustee Hobbs.
Second.
Second by trustee Daniels. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Frankie Germanero, Director of Public Works, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves for James Merchant to carry over 12 vacation days past his anniversary date of May 13, 2020.
So move.
Move by trustee Hobbs. Second by trustee Renfro. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Frankie Germanero, Director of Public Works, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves for. Director of Public Works, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves for Philip Adam Dondello to carry over five vacation days past his anniversary date equals six of two thousand and twenty.
So move.
Moved by trustee Hobbs.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Daniels.
What, 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 what's your question? So, do these days, they get carried over another year? Or they just go in the bank? They go in the bank and you don't have to keep reapproving them every year?
Anytime you have more than, depending on his years of service, if he's more than twenty, we still have to re-approve those over that now. That make sense?
That'll do the bank.
So this goes, my understanding is these five vacation days carry over into this year. So this financial year.
Twenty-five.
We're number fifteen, right?
Number sixteen.
Number fifteen.
Sixteen, sorry. Okay, so.
So, okay. So, these five vacation days go into this fiscal year. If he doesn't burn all of his days, he's not, he might have days that he wants to carry over. He has to keep carrying it over. It's not like these five go in a savings account and he won't go with them again. He still has opportunity to burn them. Does that make sense?
Right.
So let's say, when we, if we carry it, he's over, and he ends up with thirty vacation days for twenty, for the twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, twenty-twenty-one financial year. He doesn't burn those, then whatever's left over, he can carry into the next year.
But he has to come back here?
Correct. He is paid from the bank.
Any other questions? Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Resolved that upon the recommendation of Frank Germanero, Director of Public Works, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves for Michael Adam Dondello to carry over twenty-five vacation days past his anniversary date of June eighth, two thousand and twenty.
So move.
Moved by trustee Hobbs.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Daniels. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Oh, trustee Johnson. Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
You don't want the chief to come back in if you have any questions?
Yeah. There you go, Mr. Geller.
That twenty-five vacation days is an example of someone who's likely coming back.
Yeah.
Mike, Mike had it.
Although he did put on his picket suit and tie, so he don't know he's gonna die.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Item number seventeen, resolved that upon the recommendation of Kevin Hogan, Assistant Chief of Police, that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints and or approves the following reinstatement at the position of Police Officer of the Incorporated Village of Penn State, Alyssa Park reinstatement. Police Department, Police Officer salary eighty thousand forty-one dollars, effective June eighth, two thousand and twenty.
So move.
Moved by trustee Hobbs.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Renfro. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Item number eighteen, resolved that upon the recommendation of Kevin Hogan, Assistant Chief of Police, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves and or appoints the following promotion for the position of Sergeant of the Incorporated Village of Penn State. Equidilch, promotion, Police Department Sergeant, salary a hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred million dollars upon civil service approval. Moved by trustee Johnson.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Renfro, trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Resolved that upon the recommendation of Assistant Chief of Police, Kevin Hogan, that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints and approves the following promotion for the position of Sergeant of the Incorporated Village of Penn State, Frank Hill Stry, increase promotion, Police Department Sergeant, salary a hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars upon civil service approval. Moved by trustee Johnson.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Renfro. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Resolved that upon the recommendation of Kevin Hogan, Assistant Chief of Police, that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints and approves the following promotion for the position of Lieutenant of the Incorporated Village of Penn State, Shane Wellington, promotion, Department of Police Lieutenant, salary a hundred and eighty thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars upon civil service approval. Moved by trustee Johnson. Seconded by trustee Hobbs. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolved that upon the recommendation of Kevin Hogan, Assistant Chief of Police, that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints and approves the following promotion for the position of Lieutenant of the Incorporated Village of Penn State, Stephanie Jones, promotion, Police Lieutenant, salary a hundred and seventy-nine thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars upon civil service approval.
So move.
Moved by trustee Renfro.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Hobbs. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs.
Yes.
Trustee Daniels.
Yes.
Trustee Renfro.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
It was, um, we thought there was gonna be two addendums. It's not. That's one addendum that's attached. It's...
Before we move forward, I have one question for the team. Yes. These are these are vacant spots where these officers are being promoted?
These, these four spots were filled with vacancies of the Pam Quattoni and Pam Robinson who retired. So we need two attendants to replace them and two sergeants to replace the two attendants who moved up.
So who replaced the people that moved up? You don't need?
Police officers.
Yeah.
No, we're hiring more police officers as well. We're interviewing somebody today. Please, we have to interview, try to put every day of the week.
You all of this? You all of the addendum?
Oh, which one? Oh, um...
There's only one.
There's only one addendum.
Sorry. You just...
Well, just the first paragraph.
It is, though. It is the resolution, so.
You can obey?
Yes.
Okay. Addendum item number one. Resolved that upon the...
Sorry to interrupt, but should we begin upon the recommendation of?
Yes, I have it on mine for trustee Daniels.
I don't see that.
I have it on mine. I'm sorry. You should have had it on me. That's, that's another that I had made. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Resolved that upon the recommendation of trustee Jesse Daniels to approve the tax exemption from real property taxes and payment agreement pursuant to private housing finance law, five seven seven, one A, for affordable housing property being undertaken Development Corporation of Long Island or affiliate and Common Place Housing Development Fund Company Incorporated. Where, whereas, Community Development Corporation of Long Island has sponsored the formation of Common Place Housing Development Fund Company Incorporated, Housing Development Fund Company organized pursuant to Article eleven of the Private Housing Finance Law, P H F L, and whereas, H D F C, is or will become the legal or registered owner as nominee of Common Place LLC, a limited liability company. The company formed by Conifer LLC or affiliate and Community Development Corporation of Long Island or affiliate, and the company is or will become the beneficial or equitable owner of certain real property located at Main Street and Fidel Street. Village of Penn State, County of Nassau, New York, having tax map number section thirty-four, block one nine five, lots eight, nine, ten, one eleven, one sixteen, one twenty-nine dash thirty, one thirty-two, one thirty-eight, collectively the property. And whereas, H D F C has been formed for the purpose of providing affordable residential rental accommodations for individuals and families having household incomes less than and equal to various levels of area median income from Nassau, Suffolk, F M R area adjusted for family size A and I as set forth herein. And whereas, the company with assistance from the H D F C will develop, own, construct, maintain, operate a housing project at the property with twenty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-four square feet of ancillary street level commercial space to be known as Common Place Project, which will consist of two hundred and twenty-eight residential units, one hundred percent of which will have rents regulated through a regulatory agreement, regulatory agreement, to accommodate individuals and families having household incomes as follows. Of the two hundred and twenty-eight units, twenty-one units will have income restrictions of thirty percent A M I, forty-six units will have income restrictions of fifty percent of A M I, one hundred and twenty-one units will have income restrictions at sixty percent of A M I, twenty-eight units will have income restrictions at eighty percent A M I, eleven units will have income restrictions at ninety percent of A M I, and one unit will be reserved for site employees, most likely a superintendent together with the project. And whereas, in financing the project, the H D F C and the company will enter into a regulatory agreement as acquired by New York State Housing Finance Agency, H F A, the regulatory agreement, the regulatory agreement will require one hundred percent of the revenue generated residential units to be rented at the regulated rents as set forth above. Whereas, the H D F C is in the company's plan for the use of the property constitute a housing project as that term is defined in the P H F L. And whereas, the H D F C is a housing development fund company as the term is defined in section five seven two of the P H F L. And whereas, pursuant to chapter five seven seven of the P H F L, the local legislative body of a municipality may exempt the real property of a housing project of a housing development fund company from local and municipal taxes, including school taxes, other than assessments for the local improvements to the extent of all or part of the value of the property included in this completed project. And whereas, there is a great need for high quality affordable housing in the Village of Penn State, the Village, and just as important, job producing commercial businesses in the downtown. The project will provide brand new state-of-the-art facilities, directly meet both those needs. However, the project will require the Village's assistance to be financially feasible, and without an exemption, the project will not be developed. Whereas, the Village is willing to grant an exemption pursuant to chapter five seven seven of the P H F L. However, it will require a certain annual payment fee made to the Village as well as the other effective taxing jurisdictions at a level that is sustainable for the economic feasibility of the project during the exemption term. Whereas, to memorialize said exemption and to fixuate said schedule of the annual payments, the Village is to serious of entering into an exemption and payment agreement in form attached here too. And whereas, it is anticipated that the Nassau County will likewise exempt the property and enter into a corresponding exemption in a payment agreement of substantially the same terms as set forth in said exemption and payment agreement. Now therefore, it is resolved that the Village of Penn State hereby grants an exemption from local and municipal village taxes to the property and project pursuant to P H F L, chapter five seven seven, one A and two A, for a period to start upon issuance of building permit and then to run for a three-year construction period. And thereafter, for thirty years commencing on the date of the issuance of the Certificate of Occupancy, C O, or Temporary Certificate of Occupancy, T C O, provides such C O or T C O is issued no later than three years after the issuance of building permit for the project by the Village subject to the following conditions. One, the H E F C is going pursuant to the provisions of Article eleven of the P H F L to participate in the construction and operation of the project qualifies as a housing development fund company as defined herein. Two, the H E F C and the project at all times throughout the exemption period qualifies the exemption from taxation pursuant to Article eleven of the P H F L included chapter five seven seven, one A and. Three, the deed conveying entitled into H D F C and thereafter remains in compliance with the same with no default of termination of said regulatory agreement. Six, the H D F C enters into the exemption and payment agreement and thereafter remains in compliance with the same with no default for termination of said exemption and payment agreement. It is further resolved that the Village and the H D F C and or company shall execute an exemption and payment agreement substantially in the form attached here too, but subject to change based on the actual payment terms of the exemption and payment agreement included by Nassau County. The amount of payment to be allocated proportionately among the effective tax jurisdictions cannot be less than the provided in the attached form, but may be more if the Nassau County approval dictates a higher amount. It is further resolved that the mayor or such other destiny of the Village or Board of Trustees is authorized on behalf of the Village to do all things necessary convenient or appropriate for accomplishment of this resolution. It is further resolved that to achieve the project goals, Conifer has committed to the following. Bullet point one, provide residency preference for county residents of the Village of Penn State subject to approval by N Y S H C R and HUD. Bullet point two, participation in the enterprise ring program for sustainable construction. Bullet three, committed to hire local construction workforce and N V E slash W V E participation as per the community benefit agreement, C B A to the Penn State project. Bullet four, compliance with other stated items in the community benefits agreement. Through various funding mechanisms established in the community benefits agreement, Conifer will provide the following to the Village of Penn State. These commitments will be, have been memorialized and will detail in various legal documents that the Village will be its party to. Bullet point one, fair share mitigation fees for infrastructure, one million five hundred thousand dollars. Bullet two, community benefit fees, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Bullet proof, bullet point three, originally committed share of water sewer study through R D U A, twenty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. Bullet point four, course to update the water sewer study, twenty-five thousand dollars. Bullet point five, village water tap fees estimated, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Bullet six, village building permit fees estimated, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Bullet point seven, village inspection fees estimated, one hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Total fees to be paid to the Village, two million six hundred and fifty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. Moved by trustee Daniels.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Hobbs.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, real quickly. I noticed in the tax exemption and payment agreement, paragraph five, and I read it correctly if I'm wrong, it seems inconsistent with the fourth paragraph on the first page of the resolution. I don't, I don't find that comfortable.
May I, may I?
Paragraph one, two, three, four, five of the tax exemption and payment agreement. The numbers indicated don't seem consistent with paragraph four of the first page of the resolution. I don't find that comfortable.
Yes, it looks like there are typos in it.
Could be a typo?
It could be, but I don't know which one is supposed to be the correct.
The phrase is an issue. What's, what's inconsistent?
It says, um, two hundred and twenty-eight units, a hundred percent of which will have rents regulated to accommodate individuals and families having household incomes as follows. So in the resolution, it says twenty-one units at thirty percent of the A M I, and the agreement, it says eight units at fifty percent of the A M I. Then in the resolution, it says forty-six units at fifty percent of the A M I, and then in the agreement, it says a hundred and ninety units at sixty percent of the A M I. Then in the resolution, it says twenty-eight units at eighty percent of the A M I, and then in the agreement, it says twenty-eight units at ninety percent of the A M I. And the resolution has eleven more units left at ninety percent of the A M I. So it's just... Somehow they just didn't transpose whichever paragraph is supposed to be correct into both the resolution and the agreement.
Clearly, here the tax agreement, uh, if there is some consideration, what we're voting on is not the tax agreement, we're voting on the resolution.
Right, but the resolution says one of the, the resolved clauses is that you're gonna execute the tax agreement. And it said, it is further resolved that the Village and the H E F C shall execute an exemption and payment agreement substantially in the form attached here too.
Clearly, that can be amended.
Yeah.
Would you amend what consistency said? There's also one... There's also, uh, I have a question. Paragraph two of, of the resolution, they indicate, uh, the land, but I don't believe all the land has yet been transferred, has it?
No, they're under contract.
Under contract. Okay, also on the last page of the resolution where they indicate the bullet points, fair share mitigation all the way down, uh, the village water, village building permit, village inspections, they're not actually technically benefits, they're, they're actually fees. And, and, uh...
Can you speak up, Mayor, into the mic?
I, I'm saying that the... Tom, thank you. I'm saying the village water tap fees as opposed to benefits, village building permit or fees as opposed to benefits, village inspection or fees rather than benefits. As to the fair share mitigation fee for construction, one million five hundred thousand dollars. Is that a one-time payment?
For fair share mitigation, that's one-time payment.
One-time, thank you, Mayor. Chief?
Yes. Do you want to answer?
Yeah, I can clear a lot now.
You can do that.
What is it?
No, it's the police department.
It's the police department.
They're responsible for the, uh, care.
I would yield that if somebody else has any questions. Is, is there something that has to be going on tonight? Is there any way we can exchange it and bring it back? Sure. So can we pull this?